Move into it for sure.
Awesome. Okay, so, uh, welcome, everybody. It's the, um, tonight is GBOS special meeting, September the 3rd, focused on budget and a short-term rental tax proposal coming through the municipality. Go to Board of Supervisors Committee is a subcommittee subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act, Alaska Statute forty-four dot six-two dot three-one-oh, and Anchorage Municipal Code one dot two-five, public meetings. Note on that later. Go to Board of Supervisors operates under the Go to Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. I'll call the meeting to order at seven oh-two. Would like to do land acknowledgement?
Glad to.
Thank you, Brian.
The Girdwood Board of Supervisors is the indigenous peoples of Alaska. It's the land we reside on. Community of Girdwood situated between areas known to be the Nynna and Alutik homeland respects the people who were stewards of this land for generations. We commit to the continued stewardship of this land and are grateful to be part of a wider community that seeks to maintain a sustainable use of Girdwood Valley for present and future peoples.
Thank you. So do a local.
Sure, Brianna Sullivan.
Brianna's on mute, maybe.
Um, yeah, we can see that she is there anyway. Kelly Okanek here. Brian Burnett.
Present.
Jennifer Wingard.
Here.
Brianna, are you able to come off mute? Maybe not.
Um, Micah Dington.
Present.
Thank you.
Could someone just check with her perhaps via text just to make sure she can hear? That they can hear online. Anybody else online? Can you, Matthew? Matt, can you hear us?
Yep, I can hear you fine.
Okay, thank you. We should just check that Brianna can hear you. Okay, um, disclosures will touch when we get to it. Uh, we don't have an agenda approval on the list. There is some question as to, I think, other parts of the municipality may not be able to change the agenda for special meetings. I think we can. So, um, there were two other suggestions that I saw for other items. One of them was to discuss scheduling of GBOS nonprofit presentation and the vacancy we heard today on GHEC. Would anyone like to move that we add those to tonight's agenda? I'm not sure. I think one of them is somewhat urgent, although could be done outside this meeting, which is the rescheduling. The other one, I guess, we could handle tonight or we could handle our next regular meeting. Actually.
For the second discussion, I'll move.
Thank you.
But we add those.
Okay.
Let's take a discussion, our second.
Thank you. So actually, I'll ask Margaret to just these two topics. So is there anything you want to say to them?
Well, the moving of the GBOS meeting having to do with the nonprofit presentations turns out to conflict with the Holton Hills meeting that is proposed and is now, the announcements have been sent out to property owners who are affected, which is a description of its own. But in any case, um, it seems like if the meeting is, if that meeting is not going to change, then it would be helpful for, um, the GBOS presentation meeting, which is, um, not even a special meeting, I think, is more of a work session to hear these presentations. It seems more movable. So that's, that's one item. The other one is the vacancy. I don't really have anything to add to that except for, in order for me to post it, it's helpful for you to know that it's being posted. So usually we announce it and then we'll be filling it as an action that's old business. So this allows that to go on to the agenda for September.
So that would be a new business.
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Here is on the vacancy.
Brett Willbanks has announced that he will not serve.
Yeah. I think both of them find it.
Okay, so there's no more discussion. We'll just treat it as sent unless there's anybody who wants to object. And we're asking, Brianna, can you, could you just confirm you can hear us?
Yes, can you hear Amin?
Yeah. Okay, so unless there's any objection, we'll just take that as an ascendant item. Not hearing any objections. Those two items go on to the agenda. I think the, um, it'd be item number three for potential rescheduling of the nonprofit work session and item number four under new business for GHEC vacancy. Okay, um, let's move straight into agenda item number one then. Richard, sorry. I should say technically, we should have, we should have voted on the amendment and then voted on the approval of the agenda, but with the, with the boards, um, what's the word? With apologies, with the boards, uh, hopefully a send, we can just move through anyways. Okay, now we'll move to item number one, um, budget process. So the intent is to act on this tonight.
Correct. So, uh, like we said, I'll take you through, um, sort of a rehash here and there'll be some new, uh, displays in here that weren't the last meeting and they're more of an informational aspect. So this is the mill rate breakdown, the historical mill rate breakdown for the Girdwood Valley Service Area. And last year, this current year right now, we have a twelve point two-one levy or mill rate, um, which is made up of the area-wide, which they see there at point two-eight, uh, the G of S, the G, the Girdwood Valley Service Area at five point six-one and the school district at six point three-two. And in comparisons, uh, we, we just did a quick calculation, um, downtown, which is probably one of the highest mill rates because of the different things they have down there. It's just under sixteen at like five point, what was it, five point seven-nine?
Five point eight.
Yeah, sixteen, fifteen point eight. So it is, uh, in, in that range. And then you can see our averages down below where we've been at since two thousand and ten. And so you can see, uh, the area-wide has kind of bumped around certain years. It's negative, as you can see there, there's negative numbers. So there's actually a rebate that helps to offset, um, taxes because they probably have had strong year in revenues with taxes and things like that. Definitely there in the two thousand and twelve through fourteen, that was a big year, a big cycle there, but they, they've had years. But overall, the average for the area-wide has been point zero-three. For Girdwood, it's been four point seven-five. And so there's a mixture here before we had police services to where we are now. And so you see that and, and that's starting to slowly cycle out. It's hard to believe already, um, but it's on the backside. And then, uh, the school district has been around seven point one-seven. So, uh, the mill rate currently, um, is lower than the average that it has been. And then there has been certain years where there's been, uh, Anchorage School District bond debit mill, a, a debt mill. Um, and that was when the state refused to pay back capital. And so we took that for one year and then that got changed the next year. So we had to kind of eat that, but, um, but that's sort of a standout there. So this just gives you idea and then, you know, the breakdown of how to calculate mills and things like that and what it means against property values and things along those lines in that aspect. Moving forward, this just kind of gives you an example breakdown of where we're at for assessed value. So this is an example, a house does an assessed value of eight hundred and twenty-two thousand and has a residential, um, exemption. Total would be, they'd be paying ten thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-two cents in taxes. They get a residential exemption, which drops their taxes by nine hundred and fifteen dollars, nine hundred and sixteen dollars. So it brings you down to nine thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-seven cents. And then how that breaks out and what that means. So of that, uh, just over nine thousand dollars, um, two point four percent of it goes to the area-wide, so two hundred and nine dollars of that, of that amount. Four hundred and, uh, four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars goes to the Anchorage School District and forty-one ninety, um, or forty-one ninety-one goes to the Girdwood Valley Service Area, um, and, and, and those funds. And, uh, and then as you break it down even more as to what does each individual service cost this property per year? So for street maintenance, uh, a thousand thirteen forty-one, um, fire sixteen thirty-four, police seven fifty-four, the housing and economic fund forty-two dollars and then parks and rec four hundred and nineteen dollars. So, um, I like it breakdown that way because it keeps it in perspective. You know, for the street maintenance, this house is paying thirteen forty-one as their contribution and some people pay that a year just to snowplow. And then the snowplow only comes twice. So it gives you a perspective as to, uh, when we pull our money together, it, it cuts the cost down, um, to keep it going. So a lot of people complain about high taxes, but I think sometimes they get a great deal for the return, especially in the service area, um, as to what we got there. Now, looking ahead and we're going to get into the details tonight, but just give me an idea as to what we're looking at for this year. You can see the different budget totals there and, uh, and when I'm calculating my mill rates, it's based on, uh, the previous year's, um, assessment for the service area. And we know the assessment will go up, uh, again because we have lots of new builds in the valley this year. And then, uh, property values are still well below, the assessed property values are still well above low what the market rate is. So we'll probably see adjustment. So we, right now, I have a, a estimation of five point nine-nine-three for our mill rate for twenty-six, but I do think that'll be lower, um, when the new assessment for the valley is, uh, is calculated. And, um, and so that, that, but we're pretty dang close if we're on our mill, our, our calculation for this year. But as I told you in previous meetings, a lot of times I am a little bit conservatively high on my mill rates, just so that we know we have that buffer in there as compared to what OMB, uh, will calculate once they, we submit our budgets to them. And then they know better about what, uh, revenues we generated, um, off of interest and different things, um, which helped to offset our taxes. So, um, so that, that will, that will help as well as that, that line is from twenty-five and I'm sure it's going to be different twenty-six. So overall, we're looking at about a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollar increase this year and we'll get into specifics as we go through and, uh, talk about the different budgets, um, there. But that is just an over eight and then overview. And then, um, going down here, I just want to say, just give you an idea, you know, a lot of people, what do property taxes pay for? And, uh, this call, this bracket here just shows you the area-wide, um, you know, the different services within the area-wide. This is just basically a snapshot. I think it covers more, um, in that aspect. Anchor School District and the Valley Service Area, what, what it does. And then how do we compare? And, uh, what I'm missing this year is there was a really handy-dandy, uh, mill rate sheet that showed all the different tax districts in, in, uh, Anchorage and they didn't include it in the revised budget this year. And I did put a phone call in to see if I can get it, but I didn't get a response yet. But we've typically been the fifth lowest mill rate overall compared to all tax districts within the municipality. And Girdwood has the lowest mill rate levy when you compare to other tax districts with the similar services, essentially essential services, um, fire, police, parks and road maintenance. So what we are able to do down here is, uh, is pretty good. It fits our model, fits our community, um, and, and provides good services back to the residents. So that, that's a quick overview and snapshot of the, of the, uh, budget cycle currently and what we're looking at for the future. So I hope there are any questions before we move on.
Any general questions?
Yeah, everyone, actually, just, just double checking. I noticed that our local building is steadily reaching to the point where we had it historicized last year and it looks like we're potentially aiming for it a little bit this year. And I just wanted to confirm that when you talked about, I was having a fit bone for the mill rate, uh, overall, and then the lowest concern in our services render that that's still been true in recent years is that as at least our local mill rate has crept up, I see that it's been balanced, well, we actually have that pain has been balanced by a decrease in the city mill rate, right?
Uh, yes, and so that, not having that sheet, uh, makes it a little more difficult for me to understand that without having to go through and calculate all the individual mill rates for the different communities. So we might have bumped up a little bit in that standings, but I still think we're the lowest when it comes to all the services being provided because when you look at a lot of the service areas, some areas don't have fire, some areas don't have police. And within Anchorage and Ennebago River areas, that can be quite expensive. So, um, you know, the largest individual department mill rate in the municipality is Anchorage Police. That's like three point something. And so, um, but yeah, I, we've definitely grown a little bit as we have, uh, matured with our services and things are just more expensive. So, but we're still, I think, within where we need to be, um, compared to our historicals.
Thank you. Should we go on to fire department then?
Want to go presentation first?
Uh, sure.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted to recap the questions you asked last time. You asked for a, first you asked for, um, a recap, a gap analysis of all the NFPA codes versus where we are now. I have not completed that. That turned into a much larger project. There's, I stopped the spreadsheet at thirty-two codes. Each has like twelve sections. It's going to be a much larger thing. So, um, that's almost like a consultant study. So, but no, that's okay. But, uh, it's a good exercise and, and it's good for that. In addition, um, I had a conversation with ISO, uh, the ISO rating lady, uh, yesterday, yesterday morning, um, and we realized that they've, there was some missing data on the training record. So we're, we've, we're pushing it for that to see if we can change the ISO rating to a full two versus a three, near three, almost a two. So anyway, that's happened. And then the work session questions were how many incidents outside of the fire service area occurred in two thousand and twenty-four? I used the whole year. Thirty-two percent occurred outside of the Girdwood Fire Service Area. And then the other question you asked was how many incidents in two thousand and twenty-four were EMS? Fifty-eight percent were EMS rescue related. That does not include times where, uh, after the calls where maybe the crews were sent out and not, um, they did not find anybody. So the increase, the number should probably a little more on EMS rescue. I have not received the data from AFD yet, so I was doing it manually. So I'm doing it. So, um, and some of those thirty-two might actually be in, it might be Tesoro or formerly known as Tesoro, but I'm, I'm just doing it manually off the paper copies that I have, so off the reports I can print. So I'm still waiting for that data from AFD and I can probably massage this a little bit there in the future. Anyway. And then other question, just some more, just background documentation if we go to the next slide. As you know, uh, we came with a request to add for thirty-two weeks of the fourth position firefighter staffing, which was split between fire and EMS budgets. Just some statistics, uh, or some other background data. I'm ready in Idaho Fire Department did a study and they saw, when they went from three to four people using, doing the same task, they found eleven percent improvement getting water in the fire, seventy-four percent improvement establishing a continued water supply and twenty-seven percent faster victim removal time. IFF found they could rescue victims eighty percent faster. There's fewer delays in task completion. The NIST, uh, study beneficial for rescue activities and can execute tasks thirty percent. Tasker was smaller with, than a smaller crew. Obviously, I have already applied for a FEMA grant for staffing this position, but haven't heard a positive yes. Uh, and the OSHA requirement is two firefighters have to be in and outside before two go in. Next slide, please. So, uh, currently, the current condition, a structured fire with three fires, firefighters on shift plus paid on call, uh, uh, in a hydrant area. So we'd have a tone out for a fire, let's say on, uh, Timberline. The nine-one-one call would go into dispatch. We'd be tone out for the structure fire, utility forty-one and engine forty-one would respond. First firefighter is going to help establish the water supply, basically hooking up the engine to the hydrant. The engineer who drives the fire truck is going to be operating the fire pump at the, at all times. So they are not counted as two in, two out because they're pumping the truck. The captain does a three sixty on the, uh, in, on the structure and then has, and gives a scene size up and then has to wait for additional firefighters to arrive on scene before interior attack occurs. So it's all dependent, when you have your structure fire, on how many people are actually in the station, paid on call, augmenting the three people we have on shift. When we do fire attack, uh, we have to have two in, two out, not including the engineer. And also, and you also want your IC to be outside. So that's kind of the math of it. Um, and then in addition, when you come out, um, people have to go into rehab after a certain number of bottles and refresh. That's why the medic unit is there. If you have a fire victim become out, you, those two people are going to instantly have to take that fire victim to town. So there's that. Now that, that assumes that it's in a hydrant area. If it's in a non-hydrant area like where I live, uh, then the water tender also has to do a water shuttle back and forth. So need an extra person. So, uh, what's your bench strength right now? Currently, we have twenty paid-on-call firefighters. They each do forty-eight or more hours per, uh, call a month. And we are continuing to see the unaffordability drain of local firefighters. We currently have six locally of the paid-on-call staff, paid-on-call firefighters. So it's a challenge. So we, so for us to have that fourth person without adding a fourth person staffed, that fourth person, we have to, we have to kind of play the cards that one of those six people are going to be in town or, and coming, or that we have, um, paid-on, a paid-on-call firefighter doing one of their forty-eight hour ship, forty hours in the station at that time.
So is that when they are paid-on-call, they, they're in the station for those forty-eight?
Unless they're Girdwood residents, they can, at home. It used to be in the beginning of time, as the guys call it, the nineties, when I was started here, um, we were, everybody was from Girdwood. And we could be at home. Now, we, most, most people stay in the station and so, you know, they're sleeping in the station and that, so they're there. So, but it all depends on people's schedule, right? As if they're there or not. So. And like today, we have a pediatrician who's also a firefighter that's in the station right now. So, so we've got, you know, we've got summer staffing. So we have four people plus the pediatrician, uh, and myself right now. But it, it changes, it changes by the three or four hour block.
So if I just do straight math, you've got twenty paid-on-call doing forty-eight hours a month, that's forty. Twenty-four hour shifts, which is more day, more days than any month has. So that says to me that, that you would always have at least one paid-on-call plus your three people.
But, but if they, if we even them out and they could all do it, you know, they're all doing it when they can do it.
So that was a question.
Yes.
And ideally is not representative of.
Straight math, yeah, exactly. As I did with that spreadsheet, there's that sort of spreadsheet I did before, ideally we need forty-eight hours, forty-eight paid-on-call staff people in the valley who, including what we have right now for staff to make it perfect. Nobody goes on vacation, it all works out good. You know, that's, that's kind of, it's math. It's bad math, but it's math. I mean, it's not bad math, but it's challenging math because it all depends on, you know, we've been really lucky. We have a structured fire and it's a training night. Oh, look, we've got thirty people going to a structured fire.
So then, if, if the budget is approved for the coverage that you're seeking, because it's not full-time coverage of the fourth person, it's
Correct.
Better.
It's better.
Does that, when augmented with these paid-on-call, give you a hundred percent coverage of four people or is it still leaving a gap?
So what I asked for, because I looked at the number for, the board had asked me to ask for a full, full four-person staffing for those thirty-two weeks. I thought that number was going to be too high for anybody to accept. So what I did was I looked at what would it be if fire took two days? So four, two, you know, forty-eight hours and EMS takes forty-eight hours. So that gives Monday to Thursday coverage for that extra fourth person for those thirty-two weeks. And then on the weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, I'm going to assume that I can pick up extra people that, uh, can do that fourth person.
Because that's when you typically have better coverage. Okay. And then maybe this is a little bit of an elephant in the room question.
There's a, there's big elephants in the corners.
Yeah, yeah. I love just, I love just whatever.
Yeah.
So there's this part of my brain that had an experience and I just want to calibrate my experience against, um, which was, you know, there was a meeting the night before the budget thing and they were like, well, to hell with it. Let's just ask for it. We know we're not going to get it, but let's ask, you know? It, it felt like it had kind of that energy to it. But then the way that it landed in the room was like, well, this is fire. So obviously if they need it, we need it. And so I'm just like, there's a, like, I'm not clear on the energy behind the ask. Is it?
It's a real ask. It's a real ask because I've been, you know, I spend forty hours, when I write a safer act grant or a fire act grant or whatever, it's usually about forty hours of my time to write a grant, just to put in the, you know, with all the documentation, everything. So it's a real ask. It's been a real thing. It's really good to have that fourth person for summer, for those four months of summer and those two, um, and those two, uh, weeks of holiday pay, holiday time in December. The reason the board meeting was the night before was because truly the board, I'd been trying to get the board together since May. They were finally able to do it the night before. It seemed rushed, but it wasn't. And then they asked me, what are you, what are you not funding? Right? And well, I'm not funding this, right? Because I'm trying to apply for grants to get that fourth person. So, um, uh, the other thing is, you know, and we, you know, we don't want to talk about EMS, but let's say that people are on a, are transporting, two people are transporting, then we have two people left behind. And, you know, when there's that next EMS call, we don't want to talk about this, but if there's an EMS call, it's really nice to have two people versus one plus whoever's in the station. The problem is I need more, I need more community members to step up to be, yeah, if we look at what's the root cause, why am I asking for this? I need more community members to step up to be, uh, paid-on-call volunteers. We had the first open house, no one came. We had the second open house, we had two people come from Anchorage. So I don't have a lot of interest right now from community members. There's not a lot of, which is not different than the rest of the lower forty-eight in Canada where there's a decrease in people volunteering, right? So, um, ideally, we'd want to have those forty-eight people come out of the woodwork and be volunteers, but it's a hard, it's a hard thing to, to want to do. It's not necessarily, it seems like it's a fun job until, a lot of people think it's going to be fun until they get in there and then they realize, oh, you see awful things, right? Like, and it's very stressful. So, um, I think that's the challenge. So. And I, and it's ironic that we're at this point now because, you know, we, it's been like six years of fixing things. We have a really, like, our training level on the people that are there is much higher than it's ever been. We've got six people ready to do firefighter one in March, you know, and that's all good. But we still need people in the community to invest their time in being a firefighter if we want to continue down this model.
Well, thanks for sharing that context.
But there's an elephant, right? There's always an elephant. It's, yeah, it's like, and, and it's, and so much depends on when does your emergency happen compared to everybody else's emergency?
No, but like you say, like if it's two people in transport and then there's a fire, well, now we're two and we're, you know, it's like.
But that's.
You have four and so it's materially better.
Yeah.
But still, it's wide open for a series of things happening at the same time, which leaves everybody flat. And that's
Right.
truth of where we're at and okay.
Yeah, and I can't, and I can't, yeah, I can't.
Makes it materially better because if there's two people sitting here and there's another EMS call, at least there's a response.
Yeah.
Not no response.
Yeah.
I, I think I get the energetics of.
Yeah, and so that's kind of the challenge. I mean, it's, you know, I don't drink because I figure that I need to be the, I need to be there because I'm worried there's no staff. You know, if there's low staffing, I'm like going to have, at any given time, I'm going to have to come drive the ambulance, right? It's a whole lot better than it used to be when we didn't have any staffing, but still, you know, it, it is disruptive to. It's really feels good when there's like six or eight people in the station. That is a wonderful night, right? That's, so.
Like that to me.
Yeah.
Thanks for that context. Sorry if I asked too many.
Thanks. So, uh, Chief West, excuse me. So, uh, on the budget here, uh, the two thousand and twenty-four column is, is current, right? That's, that's actual, the million eight eleven two seventy-one?
That's the budget.
That, that was the budget?
That's the budget, yeah.
That was the budget. So what was the actual for two thousand and twenty-four? Do you, do you recall, give or take?
I don't have off the top of my head the first. Uh, I think we were over in some columns, but I would have to go get it, truthfully. I can tell you for two thousand and twenty-five, we are up-to-date budget to actual. We are under budget on labor because I had a FEMA grant, uh, to pay for some things. We are almost ninety-six percent fully spent in non-labor for fire for this year. And, uh, and trying to figure out why that's happening. And then on labor right now, we are completely right where we should be. completely right where we should be. So. Yes. Yeah, so that's really good.
Yeah.
Have to change the way we do our payroll calculation. Department of Labor mentioned that we have to change it. We had a lawyer review it. Um, so that, that possibly will impact the budget. Um, uh, which I've reflected in the two thousand twenty six to make sure that we make the same, like, I'm really happy where we are. Traditionally, fire departments are over budget and labor, um, because it's, you can't budget for it. So for us to be right on is really good. So anyway, that's where we are.
Okay, so yeah, so we, we went over budget in twenty twenty four and on track to be on budget in twenty twenty five.
Yes.
Thank you.
So just to be clarified, um, most likely she, the chief works under a nonprofit. So what happens is that um, uh, payments are given quarterly to the fire department to run the nonprofit site. So if they're having issues in the nonprofit, um, it may not always correspond back to the service area budget that we pay those quarterly payments to. So a lot of times we haven't had um, a negative budget with fire for many years. We've had some emergency situations where we've had that unfortunately take the capital contribution and put it towards operations. Um, but that chief has worked on to get that under control. Um, and so uh, so on the service area side, we're usually right where we need to be.
Okay, right. So the first, the first couple of years I was here, we were short and you were right sizing the budget, I think. Um, we've managed to do that. Last year we were, I believe we were over, but I had a cushion. I'd saved up trying to cushion. Um, because part of having the cushion was the fact that the municipality sometimes is late in their payments and the old chiefs used to not pay people waiting for the municipality to pay late. So I didn't want to do that. So I tried to create a cushion so that we were always able to pay people. Um, that cushion's probably gone at this point, um, but I was able instead of to come back and ask for additional money, I was able to do it out of the budget and not be able to ask. So I feel really good that we haven't, you know, for those first three years, it seemed like I was always in asking for more money. I haven't been doing it, so.
A question. Yeah, I've, I've got one that come back to you. Um, so actually I got two questions. So I'll ask one, then you can ask one, then I'll come back. Um, nice question first. I, I remember, I think um, a couple of uh, recruitment rounds ago, I think you said there was, there'd been an increase in the number of Girdwood residents who.
And then they moved out.
I was going to say, so what happened?
They moved out. One uh, one became, uh, so we have one that's an engine, that's a Girdwood, grew up in Girdwood. Um, that person has recently become an engine, uh, they've moved out of the service area. Um, we have a couple of others that are part-time, um, so they're not included in that twenty. Um, but they are still in the service area. Um, but other people are just leaving the service area.
Okay.
It.
It's the same as our general population problem.
Yeah.
People are leaving.
People are, I, people are, I think people are just, it's not affordable, right? And
Yep.
We have one fire, that I didn't include in the total, one firefighter moving out uh, this month. So other people have rented out their houses and moved to town.
Yeah.
It's a thing, so um.
It's the same problem with the sort of churned population and particularly younger.
I just don't see, we, we don't seem to have that. It seems like a totally different popular, and we've talked about this many times, but it seems totally different than when I was here in the nineties. And there was just this big group of people that had free time to be able to come and do the fire station thing, right? And I just don't see it anymore. So um, the resort though, uh, we have, uh, Cara Edwards is on our board. Um, and she was mentioning that they are trying to have like full-time positions all through the year. They're going to have two hundred employees that are here full-time. So um, she's going to arrange for me to go talk to them to see if we can draft some of them into the fold. So because we don't really have resort employees in, in the mix at the moment, which is different than it used to be, who's having resort employees, so.
But a significant number of resort employees here on temporary visas.
Right. Yeah, those are, yeah.
So, yeah, that cuts down.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Oh, just if you do get the FEMA grant, then
Yeah.
do you give the money back to the, but how does that work? Like that comes in?
Yeah, if I did get the grant, I would have to do a five percent match, but then, yeah, I could give the money. I wouldn't feel comfortable giving the money back. I wouldn't need the money then, right? So I don't want to, don't want to take money I don't need. Well, I'd love to take money I don't need, but.
I, I just, okay, that that is the vision. If the grant comes through, then you don't need this, then it comes back to the service area and I guess it goes to the, if it's part of an approved budget and we've already established the property tax, then it goes back to the unrestricted funds or something?
Well, you would probably have a good discussion about it just to say, well, we could put that towards the payoff on engine forty one or put it towards the capital, uh, capital contribution for the future tender. You know, we could talk about it in that way. It'll probably stay expense because we, you know, you, you plan for the future. So we have, you know, whenever I see surplus money, I'm like, well, let's put that towards our capital needs.
Yeah, got it.
And so that is the budget, it's the budget we set in the first quarter revision that is used to collect property taxes. So any changes we make there. So if, for example, we know there was a change in the financial situation.
Property tax assessment.
In April.
We can reduce the budget.
My question is, um, last year, uh, across the Anchorage Fire Service Area, uh, the mill rate for uh, Anchorage Fire Department was two point one eight. Here in Girdwood, the mill rate we're paying for Girdwood Fire Department is two point one eight. We're paying basically the same mill rate as AFD or Girdwood.
Yeah.
Are you providing the same service as AFD would do? Because it seems like no, if you've got to make.
Well, yeah, actually, I would say yes, because uh, my, well, it depends, right? Uh, Chief Froggy has said, although I can't speak for him, that, you know, if he got rid of us, he would probably put a three-person engine company here, right? That's probably what you'd get. Um, I don't know if you'd get the ambulance. I would hope you would, right? So um, I don't know, right? I can, I can provide you the numbers of what an AFD engine costs and an ambulance, because I've done that before, right? Because I know that there are more. Um, but you know, in terms of, we have three people here all the time, four people, you know, so if we're just looking at fire, you're going to get the, you probably will get the, I can't, I don't know. It depends what the fire chief wants to put here. I can't, I can't really speak to what he would put here. I would assume. Yeah, I don't know, but I would assume uh, under that scenario, he would put he would put an engine here.
Okay. But obviously last year, this year we'll be looking probably at a relative increase of, so we've.
Well, we don't know what the mil, we don't know what the mill rate is going to be, right? Because of the, I mean, to me, the valuation of property, I don't know if anybody's looked at their house property or tried to insure it lately, but property value seems to have gone up significantly in a scary way. So.
If you compare the valuations with what places are actually selling at, even in today's market, it's a huge gap.
Yeah, so I was surprised at, I was surprised at that last week. But that also plays into the people moving out, right? Everybody's selling out, moving out. So, yeah.
Okay, any further questions? What I'm going to propose is we go through the whole budget and then make, and then do the voting at the end.
Yeah.
Rather than one at a time. So um, especially because we have the lower issue. So do you want to go through the next?
Sure.
Questions?
Sure. So the next one up is the Girdwood Housing and Economic Fund. Um, I'm proposing a reduction in this this year. Uh, uh, just due to the fact that we have not had any projects um, that we have met. The, the one thing that we do have out there would be uh, the feasibility study, which would basically take us to thirty five percent design on our RV books.
Thank you.
Um, which I could possibly see me completed in twenty six. Um, and so at this point in time, I uh, suggest that we reduce the fund down to forty thousand dollars. And we look at um, we take a hard look at that with first quarter revisions, uh, depending what comes out of the Housing Economic Committee or, or what the plans are for the year. Uh, we can make that decision by February um, as to what we, if we want to add more funds to this, but um, we've only over time, we've spent about seven thousand dollars out of this fund over the last two years, uh, which was for the support of writing a um, grant to the EPA for climate relevancy and we have not heard anything about that since the administration's taken over. So we don't know where that, that application stands at this point in time.
Any questions?
The, uh, do we have an, an idea on what the uh, thirty five percent plan for an RV arc's going to run, give or take?
Uh, it, it will probably be within the fifty thousand dollar range. Um, and uh, I can pull that up real quick because we had a proposal initially from the company to do that. Um, and so I can figure out what that is, but um, but yeah, it's somewhere in that range.
The rule of thumb is anything from a term contract is forty nine thousand less.
Okay. Um, and then um, as we continue to move forward or continue to make progress um, on a potential um, development around uh, the Ruane Road parcel, I wonder if we are anticipating the need of any further um, surveying or lobbying or grant writing or anything like that.
My sense is that's the most likely. That and potentially doing a professional plan are the two things that's still sitting on the list of likely expenses in the next year or two on top of the, of the.
But do I, do I, so do I understand correctly right now that the Girdwood Housing and Economic Development Committee have got a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars to, to work with?
Currently, the budget is open to that. So yeah, and the Housing Economic Committee can make a suggestion, but GBOs really has the ability
Yeah.
to uh, prove that.
Sorry, one clarifying question. Reminder, there was the potential that they're going to get hit up for taking some of the funds for the bridge.
Well.
We, we have other projects that potentially might use some of those funds besides this bridge.
Correct. And, and uh, after we finish the twenty six process, I wanted to take a review and take a look at this budget for finishing twenty five. And if we have nothing major planned at this point, um, I would probably work with the board to talk about moving those funds towards the bridge. Um, as an economic fund or economic development project, um, and, and use that for, for uh, for that capital contribution. Now that we're in month nine um, of twelve, uh, you know, it'll be hard to get some sort of project off the ground um, at this point in time. And so planning for next year would probably be the important thing to do.
I don't really want to jump on the capital, but just because that just came up. The um, the two big-ish projects are, that were sort of imminent, that bridge and the Ruane Culvert.
Mm-hmm.
Is the Ruane Culvert basically all aligned and ready to go? And there are likely to be big surprises for that, whereas there still are likely to be surprises with bridge.
Uh, the, the big thing we'll have to figure out there is, is what material we use to build that culvert with. It's American steel. Uh, if it's steel, we have to use American steel. And so that it uh, could become a big uh, cost driver in the project. Uh, because we have an EPA grant, so it's got federal requirements for Buy America. So those things are going to be worked out. Uh, it may be a concrete uh, reinforced with steel, and so it'll be less steel in that. Um, it's, it's quite a complicated build on that project because we have a sewer trunk right above where the culvert goes under. But we need to build something that's big enough for a fish passage with the fish bottom. So uh, it'll be a little bit of a designing hurdle, but it's nothing that can't be done. So we do it quite a bit. So either way, we're going to have some steel in it. It's going to cost us more money. Either through tariffs.
Same extent at the, the bridge.
Correct.
Of being a range request.
Correct. But for the most part, you know, the rest of it is pretty straightforward. It's rock and, and earth and uh, and paving and things like that. And we, we've already done it once down there, so we have a good sense of what it'd be. Just the, the structure that goes in there will be the most expensive part.
Okay.
Luckily, all the material that's on top of that pipe right now can all be reused and put back on the new pipe.
Any other questions before we move to roads? Okay, let's go to roads.
So roads, uh, this houses Margaret and I's payroll or, or labor. And so I'm showing the standard increases that we see over time. Um, uh, Margaret's position is union, so she sees a bump each year. I'm executive, so I'm at the will of the mayor. So like for the last two years, we haven't seen an increase in change uh, for salary. So this sort of just represents more of the union change. Uh, that could change depending on where the mayor goes, but uh, I'm just going off historicals here to show you the differences that we see each year. So um, you can see it there. It's about three thousand dollars uh, or so it goes up. And then uh, the one, the two big changes I have in here is um, one, I'm adding a hundred thousand dollars. Our five-year term contract with uh, with our current road contractor, Western uh, uh, finishes in March next year or April next year. And so um, I'm asking for a hundred thousand dollar increase because we know that equipment hourly's are going up. Um, I mean, when we started this contract, I think our hourly on a semi was a hundred and ten. And now we're seeing averages out there about two ten, two twenty an hour. So that just gives you an idea. Uh, we have fairly good rates right now on graders and things like that. But I know my contractor bemoans about how low the rate those are, especially post-COVID years. Uh, overall, the pricing went up. So um, so I know that we're going to see, expect an increase there, which means that uh, with a hundred, a hundred thousand more, that this allows me to maybe maintain the status quo of the work that we do. Um, if not, actually still do less work because we're going to be paying higher hourly hour rates on, on equipment. Uh, whoever wins the bid, it will be an open bidding process. So anyways, that's the increase there. And then uh, down here, I did increase by fifty thousand to meet that EPA match for the one point six million grant for the Ruane Culvert. Um, we have to come up with a four hundred thousand, so that's representing that right there. Um, so you see the increase there. Um, and the thing uh, that we have down here is the IGCs, what we talked about. These are the IGCs that we're getting this year. These are the government, intergovernment charges. We get charged from other departments. I just carbon, I just copied those from uh, the years past. Um, but the one thing I did point out is that the general liability jumped quite a bit uh, there in that one. And so I think that's a subject we might bring up with the municipal manager at the next meeting. Um, but overall, we're looking at a hundred and fifty three thousand uh, dollar increase here. Um, and uh, compared to last year. So directly tied to the uh, contract and uh, the increase for um, capital to make that match grant with EPA.
Thank you. Any questions on roads? Move to Parks and Rec.
Well, uh, the positive news is Park and Rec, uh, we're proposing a big cut this year. Um, it's unfortunate Parks and Rec takes the hit sometimes here, but uh, I do show a bit of an increase here in our labor. Uh, we do hope we get our two park caretakers back. Uh, they've been great. John and Luke, you know, been locals here and uh, uh, they've been with us now for three years. And so they do have interest in coming back next year. So this shows the nominal increase that they see uh, with their uh, union seasonal positions um, there and uh, between the two of them. And then um, where you, some of these numbers are actually showing reductions. We're showing reductions with the campground. Uh, we're showing reductions with uh, tree removal, um, hazardous tree removal, uh, uh, trail materials. We're showing a reduction there. Hopefully we can find grants in different ways to help fill some of these voids. Um, and then uh, um, in that area. And then we did make uh, in the grants this year, we do hard fund now for valleys, committee, uh, Girdwood Valley Transit and Little Bears. And then uh, our grant funding is uh, set at twenty two thousand five hundred for whoever applies and gets approved um, in that aspect. And then I did reduce uh, four weeks of trail work with SCA. Um, and then I've, I've re-stated, reduced that down to uh, ten thousand. That is just under a week of work we can get with them. So the service area would fund that. And then we hope we would find other sources of funding uh, to maybe possibly get three weeks of work from them next year. Um, so uh, so you see the reduction there. And then we dropped down uh, the contribution um, from five hundred thousand, which was a large one last year to help with the suspension bridge, down to three hundred thousand, uh, which may be needed for the suspension bridge, but if not, we can use it for many other projects, especially when we get that pro, park plan done. Uh, and we still are working through trails uh, plan as well, trying to uh, fulfill some of the wishes that the community has for recreation. So um, so working that through. So that's the reduction there. And um, so that takes us down two hundred and four thousand from last year to this year. Um, which is really tied up mostly in that capital reduction, but a few smaller things up there. So so that is uh, parks for next year.
Any questions on parks?
Yes, I just want to kind of, yeah, that uh, assume this would be the point at which we would, would consider or not consider, once again, the fees that we're charging. This is under, within this budget. once again, the fees that we're charging. This is under, within this budget. And I just wanna point out that during my time on the board, we had not raised and we had not raised prior to that unless I am missing something. So I just, I I it feels, given the overall magnitude of this budget and the overall numbers that we're talking about a little bit, uh, bang shop level to talk about, um, five hundred dollars camp site maintenance instead of a thousand and um, losing a thousand in trails, materials, things like this. Um, however, I I do sometimes wonder if we're, what's the, uh, there's some saying about pinching pennies, stepping over dollars into pennies. And so I just, wanna point out to the board that uh we are right now lower than any other campground area. And I I understand that our services are are not, we're not always comparing apples to apples, but we are lower, particularly for our facilities, than any facility, any facility in Anchorage, including public facilities.
Do you mean the fees that we charge when people?
For to use this room?
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. Um, and I think it's worth us, worthy of us talking about that because uh, you know, I got a phone call the other day from Eagle River and they're revising their budget, their fees up there. And they asked us what our room rental was, and I said it's ten dollars an hour, and they were like, what? You know, it's like, and we we've most recently had that discussion and we talked about raising it to twenty dollars an hour. And there was some pushback because they felt like nonprofits would not be able to use the room and things along those lines. But I do think there is room to raise our fees and and still be, I mean, twenty dollars an hour is still pretty affordable um, for a room like this with this amount of technology and how nice it is. So so I I do think that's a good thing for us to put into the agenda for the fall and maybe discuss that and find ways to raise additional revenue. So.
Can you do those two revenue uh numbers? Sorry, Brianna, your hands up.
Yes, thank you. I also wanted to thank Jennifer for bringing that up because we did talk about this last year. And I was scrolling through uh and also thinking when Kyle said, oh, um, well, this is gonna take a cut. That this is one of our departments that earns money when people visit. But I am very open to raising uh fees that have been stagnant for many years and aren't competitive. And we do have a beautiful facility and with all the caretaking that happened this year in the summer, uh, I think it might hold up for another season, some of it.
Thank you.
Where else does revenue come from other than this room?
Uh, so for the most part, our revenue comes from recreation. Um, the fire department receives revenue for out-of-service area calls, which usually never is close to what they actually have to expend. Um, and then uh also for um, uh, you know, wildland fires that they go on, they get called out to. Uh, but uh, for the most part, and then um, we do get a little bit of revenue with roads, but it's not really much of anything. Um, so parks and rec and and fire are probably our two main ones.
No, but within parks and rec, there's this room. It's the Lions Park, like does that?
Uh, so.
Pay?
The pavilion, any park rental.
Okay.
Um, special events. Uh, we waive all the fees on Forest Fair, so we don't, we only really get, um, the thing that they pay for is uh alcohol uh and everything. In the end, they just uh short of uh a thousand bucks or something.
They're a thousand.
A thousand dollars total for the rental, the whole eight day, for three days. Uh, some stuff from Town Square Park, you know, just things like that, and they're all pretty nominal. And then the campground, campground's pretty steady. I think we maybe make a thousand dollars off that in summer or maybe more. So.
Okay, thank you.
What is the campground rental at the moment?
Ten dollars a night.
And again, how does that compare to?
It's pretty cheap, but it's pretty ru- it's pretty rugged over there. Um, during high water, half of it disappears. So, no.
Waterfront.
Yeah, yeah. Hopefully you're not in there when the waterfront comes up, so. It's gotten better, but yeah, no, it's pretty, we, I mean, we we send the crew through there, we maintain it daily. You know, we have people, we have staff going through there and looking at it. So, and we fund our costs, helps us to manage through a volunteer position.
So, um, so when I looked at this before, I, it was a little bit difficult to compare apples to apples when there was not abundance of comparables for our campground because generally they've got. Uh, but this facility was easier and at the time, probably years ago, when I looked at Anchorage, it looked to be apples to apples for this kind of space was thirty five an hour. And that was a few years ago, and I don't know where Eagle River was when you, I I don't know if they told you where they're at approximately, but.
I think they were looking at twenty dollars or more, and they had been at twenty or like fifteen dollars or something like that, but they were trying to catch up more to Anchorage. But um, they had the same sense as us is that they didn't wanna um, they have a populace that uses the rooms and uh and sort of the same groups, and so they didn't wanna run them out by overpricing it. So they're trying to find that balance. Whereas at Anchorage, they know they, if somebody leaves, they got somebody to fill the void. So I think that, and that was the feeling here, especially with Four Valley programs, but we're seeing less and less Four Valley programs here. Um, in the summers, we're seeing individuals running more of a commercial operations, like their own yoga, yoga programs and morning exercises and things like that. So um, so it's it's uh less Four Valleys who's trying to offer discount classes versus those who are offering classes that they're trying to make money off of. So.
So that's interesting. So the demographics of the rentals changed.
Yes, and we're pretty dang busy because the library, you know, we have a great library staff right now, so they've got programs daily in here. And then we have lots of lots of meetings uh for the community, so that that sucks up a lot of time. And then uh, but um, but we have dedicated users and so um, but I don't think they would flinch if we raised it by a hundred percent to twenty bucks. Because it's still really affordable at twenty bucks. So.
They just did, it, the the figure here is um thirty one hundred and there's three thousand under roads, I think.
Yes.
It, does that six, sixty one hundred cover basically everything?
Yes.
All of the park facilities plus the campsite?
Correct. So we, the most of the rentals for the uh room go into the um, the, to the roads account. That's where it's historically gone. This helps us to keep a straight number on this, and then we can quickly look at it. And then all the rest of the outside facilities goes into the parks budget.
Okay, so the the pavilion rental is, again, what's the rate now for pavilion rental or for park rental in general, except?
Depends on the duration of the rental. So less than four hours, I think is sixty five. And four to seven or eight is eighty five, and then longer than eight hours is a hundred and something. Um, this is a market that's kind of emerged, to be honest. Like for the longest time, we'd have maybe two weddings over the course of the summer, and they were usually pretty high impact one way or another. And um, it it was, it was just an odd arrangement for everybody um, as far as expectation compared to deliverable, right? Um, but more recently, we have people using the pavilions just for like a lunch spot with their tour groups. Um, and so we actually have sort of a mildly competitive thing going on right now between two groups that have historically used it. And then I have an inquiry from a third as well. So now I have more people that wanna play in the park in a way that they're always happy with um than I really have room for. So this will be something that adding a pavilion at the Lions Club Park will help with. Um, but anyway, at this point, I could use more space.
In terms of numbers, basically, if we, if we just flat doubled everything except for the campsite, we'd be talking about maybe another five thousand a year.
I don't know that you would double exactly the rate for the rentals of pavilions, but yeah. I wouldn't necessarily support that, but I think there is some room for that.
Yeah, I think we brought it more in line with Anchorage. Maybe we're just a little bit under Anchorage, but I think we brought more in line with what Anchorage is charging. That's, that's more of the standard rates. You could probably look at sewer and probably silver rates too.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we still, you know, five thousand a year, that is the sort of maximum.
Yeah. It depends. I mean, we can also have pretty busy things that just happen. Sometimes we get wedding after wedding or rehearsal, we don't have a rehearsal dinner that's going on. And and then other years, you know, people aren't into getting married, so we have less of those. So.
COVID really put a dinger on this.
We've seen things grow back from COVID. It really dropped off during that, but like everybody, it's growing back. So.
I would say in order to, uh, like, well, we could get to a point where we're charging enough that there is some expectation of service, and that is not provided right now. Um, it's definitely a self-serve, and you know, there's some condition issues here that could be rectified. I think it might almost be time for a new carpet.
And that, I think, is for us to grow our uh capital fund. We, right now, we have forty seven, we'll talk about that later on, but we have forty seven thousand in that fund. You know, just a couple of years ago, we brought up the whole uh audiovisual system in here, which is great, works wonderful. And so um, but making it, once again, a mayor contribution to that and looking at the rug in here, um, things like that. So, but for the most part, the building is, you know, the rest of the, rest of the facility is taking through those IGCs. And we call them every time something happens and they're out here fixing things. So we try to maximize those IGC costs as much as as we can to make them fix things. So.
Yeah, I think the only group that I have any kind of heartburn about as far as raising the room rental rate is like the birthday parties for, you know, your average two-year-old. There's really, there's a threshold beyond which people don't need to go for that party.
On the other side, if we have less of those, I'm happy.
I was gonna say, we should have like a balloon retrieval fee or something like that.
Could be abuse on the rooms. So.
As we heard earlier, if everyone under forty is leaving, you'd probably have a decrease.
Still a lot of kids.
There's a lot of kids. They're all having birthdays.
Okay, maybe COVID.
I just gotta hand it.
Brianna?
I was just gonna chime in. I thought that'd be the easiest thing to raise. Uh, that's all. The kids' birthdays. There's a lot of them, and they all go to all of them, I think.
Yes.
So the room is used.
Yes.
Um, if there's nothing more on Parks and Rec, let's move on to police.
So police, uh, we are looking, you know, we're we're ending year three of the uh three-year contract that was at seven ninety-three. And under that contract, there was a increase uh for the, for another two-year extension that would take us to eight fifty-six for eighty-seven. Um, the Public Advisory Committee has supported that increase. Um, and uh also supported um the uh additional uh requests for funding that the um, uh, City of Woodyer would like to see to renew that contract. They are favorable, but they have asked for additional funding, um, ten thousand to cover the overtime for special events. Uh, the additional officers needed for for the three additional events is basically slush cup, uh, Forest Fair and New Year's. And then uh, the additional costs with the new dispatch, which they just started here, um, which would be thirty two thousand seven hundred and fifty. And that is a mixture of the dispatch uh costs itself and then the software required to work with that new dispatch. Um, and so uh, in all, uh, that would be a hundred and six thousand dollar increase um for twenty-six. And then that would be the same price for twenty-seven. So we would know exactly the prices for the next two years. Um, this budget's been nice because you could uh, uh, really work with those numbers for three years and know where it's at um in that aspect. Uh, our last meeting, I know there, we had a long discussion about uh more negotiation for the future contract, which would probably be um very doable. Um, I don't know if you'd be able to accomplish that in this one as this contract ends in three months. Um, so so that's, that's where we're at um with the requests for there. Uh, you know, I've talked to Chief Fache with him. I did purposely not invite him to these meetings because he's a contractor. Um, and so I wanted to have more general conversations with you and not have the contractor in the room. Um, and so um, we can have those discussions, but that that's what we're looking at uh for for twenty-six and to renew that for the next two years.
Hey, any discussion on police? Any, so let's move, refleet, capital and undesigned. Then we should come back and start.
Oh, I, I do have, I'm sorry, a question on that, on the police budget. The, so we're, we're paying um, the police, the Woodyer Police, twelve thousand dollars to manage our towing in in Girdwood.
No. No, so the only costs are up above there uh in that uh fifty-three, three eighty is that, that's directly tied to it. I manage that, uh, I manage everything else.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, I I take care of the substation uh payments, all that. And then I have that fund to pay for cow towing when we need it and then other miscellaneous police items. So Woodyer Police says, hey, we've got a dead bear and we need to remove it from the service area. And I say, okay, well, get the bill and if you need to take and have it disposed of, send me the bill. So if we have things along those lines, signage, um, PSAs, all those things come out of there. It's.
Got it. Okay.
Things rise up. So I control those funds.
And do, do we ever receive any revenue for towing vehicles?
No, uh, because most of the time, uh, they, uh, we're on the backside now of um when metal used to be really, uh, modies used to be high, and then they would come running down here to take your car away because they can make money. Um, and now we have to pay to have them disposed.
Yeah.
So we were just actually today at the metal recyclery, like things that we had here and and uh, there really said there was a lot of tow trucks that are dumping off cars. So, and they all pay something like a hundred and fifty bucks a car that comes in to have them disposed of. So. So, yeah, and we end up paying about four twenty-five uh right now in our current uh contracts. Uh, we are gonna rebuild for towing and see if we can get it for a cheaper rate. So.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um.
Margaret?
If you touch on capital, undesignated fund, any other question?
Um, I realized that um, we didn't discuss under the Parks and Rec budget, but the uh turf contract is also up this year, so that'll be going out to bid. Um, so right now, that's a thirty-three, five, and I just want you to be aware that it'll be going out to bid.
There's probably be a discussion at first quarter because we'll bid it and we'll know what the cost is gonna be for turf going forward. And then uh, we had to make a first quarter revision when we redid it three years ago. And then I can touch on capital. Um, so the first list here is the uh, sort of the priority projects we have for the different areas um, out there. And um, and so uh, the Glacier Bridge uh is the the most priority for Parks and Rec and Trails right now. And then also the Lions Club Park, and um, and we're working with grants on both of those. And uh, and 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 trying to work through that um, that aspect. So uh, we will bid that Glacier Bridge this fall, and we will see how much it costs and make a determination if we got enough funds right now to do it or if we have to figure out uh Plan B, or can we move forward and still figure out the Plan B um for funding and and get some things done. So, so there'll be a lot of uh figuring out once after we get that bid out and we know what the thing is there. Uh, I do have in here a new grooming snow machine, um, possibly twenty-six, twenty-seven. Right now, luckily, our fleet didn't work hard last year. Unfortunately, I should say, our fleet didn't work hard last year. We're hoping it works hard this year, but uh, we've been really milking the life out of our uh, our, our, our machines and keeping them going. Uh, but we've gotten to the part where it's getting hard now to find, uh, for especially our groomer specials, we have two of them, uh, to find those parts. So we'll probably have to look at that, but we have a great partnership with the NORTA Club. And uh, and so between the two of us, we figure out how to make all that stuff work um as we go forward. And then we're currently in the process of park planning, and so we are uh through um all our, we're gonna have a public meeting coming up soon uh to continue that outreach, and we've done all our stakeholder meetings, so that that's coming together nicely. And then Fist Passage, um, we are almost done with Davos, and so that project, uh, you know, it came in over a million dollars. And uh, but that's the current budget right now. We think the contingency is gonna be fairly low um for money used out of contingency. So it'll drop us back under a million dollars, so it, that's a positive. But still, it's an expensive project uh when you get into these things, especially dealing with all the utilities. In the end, they have a stronger uh, more robust system down there that's gonna protect that neighborhood uh for future flooding. Now we're getting ready to raise funds for the next one. Um, and I do hope at some point the state has some capital funds because uh this project would be ideal as it serves the airport um, and is an important vital link for them, and hopefully we can get some money out of them for this project. Uh, but I have to say, I'm proud of the service area for getting two out of the three culverts done in this area. We've been talking about it for ten years. We finally are down to the last one, and I think we can get over that hurdle as we go forward. Uh, and then this quickly, some of these are other things, you know, the the veil, the paved timber line, that's something we're gonna have to discuss more and and look at alternatives there as as proposed, posed to us by financing uh versus bonds. And then uh, the service area improvements, we're waiting for that to get platted, which is gonna be presented at your next meeting. That's moving forward, so I'm happy about that. And then some of these other things are, oh, and the box culvert at Rouen. So, you know, a lot of these projects are in motion. Um, we're just trying to figure out where we'll get the funding for it. That's what I say to all my administrators. I say, well, I have to go, so I have to go find. That's what I say to all my administrators. I say, well, I have to go. So I have to go find out where I can find funding. So that's always our our challenge. So. And then just going through it, Engine Forty-One is one of the big purchases right now. I didn't get into details with the smaller capital purchase that FIRE has, but I know talking with Chief, we've got to start thinking about tender. Is our next one in the in the future. So we'll let's let's get Engine Forty-One here and then we'll start taking how to get a fund tender and get that figured out. So but, you know, the service area is keeping up with their needs, not as nicely as I hope. But maybe we talk about those STR regulations, there's some money that can come back for infrastructure through that. So.
In the waterline, we could get rid of all all the tenders.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Talk about money.
Yeah.
So this is just overrun of our our different projects out there and our contributions that we've made over the years for FIRE and 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 different things along those lines. So, you know, we've we've done some big catch up on some things. So that gives you a view. And then down here, this just gives you current funds at this point in time where we're at. We have a lot of contributions that need to move, like the seventy-four thousand for the FIRE needs to be moved over and put into their account. And then right now we're in the motion of of putting the contribution in for parks. We'll see that probably on the assembly agenda in in the coming month. And and then streets, I've already made that move because I knew I needed that money. But this can tell you some of the available funds we have going on. This gives you a sense where we're at and what the funds are and and what they're tied to right now in in long little signs. So I still got to figure out, I got to move this money for the cemetery predevelopment fund. So I'll put that on the agenda with the board. We can pass that into it. This is not needed anymore, but it's still sitting there holding. So but yep, that's kind of a review of all that stuff. So.
Couple of things, the the one point, is it one point six million from EPA for Ruane? That's actually on the assembly next Tuesday.
Correct. So we're just solidifying that the assembly accepts the grant and we can load the budget and start working.
Yes. But the other thing, if you go back to the previous page.
Yeah.
With the capital contributions, this relates back to something Jennifer said earlier. If you if you look, so we were paying basically two hundred thousand towards capital and it went up to about two fifty until twenty twenty-one. But it's been so much larger since. And if you go back and look at our mill rates and take out the bit that's allocated to capital all the way back, we've actually seen a slight reduction in our operation. So it was about back in the sort of twenty sixteen time, we were, the mill rate for operations was around five and it's been about four and a half the last four years, but paying more and more into capital. So if we actually split those two out, I think I haven't done the calculation for this year, but last year it was about four point four operation and just over one mill. Nearly one point two mill for capital. So we're, we've really been changing what we've been paying for because we haven't had access to bonds. So that's kind of the big picture. That's the big story underneath this, that our operations have actually, our operation. Although the amount has gone up, the actual operation rate, the mill rate has decreased. So we're coming, I think this year we're coming down a little bit from last year, but it's still the second highest ever. So that's the kind of, that's the millstone around our neck of not being able to get any bonding sources.
And I'll take the blame for it because I've been pushing you guys on capital contributions more and more every year.
I mean, infrastructure is necessary.
Yep, we have to keep up with it.
Part of it, part of this is because we're now paying replacement costs of money that was effectively uncle Ted money from a decade or two ago. And that's bigger than it's definitely dried up.
Isn't appropriate time to make a motion to approve the budget?
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, I think the, and the way we've managed it forward is we've done it, we've done a vote. So one for fire department, for housing, roads, direct police. So.
I moved.
Suggest.
Do that.
So so I intend motion for to approve a budget request of two million one hundred twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and five dollars for the fire department. That's the white number, isn't it? Or is it? That's the one I've taken from the, what I believe is the final number.
Yes, that's correct. Yep, right there.
So moved. Brianna?
Thank you, Brianna. I got a second.
A second. Can we just move to do all of them?
We need the numbers.
We need the numbers individually for O M B.
Okay.
There is an argument that we might change some. So, okay, so second for the purpose of discussion. Any further discussion on this? I'm going to, I'm gonna make a comment that we had, we had a number of years where the fire department was by far the largest thing, really only significant. And this has happened for many years. So this isn't our final saying. I would actually propose that we reduce that number to to effectively halfway between last year and this year. So instead of the full increase, we propose fifty percent of the increase, which would be two million forty-two thousand instead of two million one hundred twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and five. That's a motion. I moved to land.
Second.
Thank you.
Can you restate the number?
Two million forty-two thousand. Which is exactly midway between the twenty twenty-five budget and the requested twenty twenty-six budget. So that's half the increase.
Two million forty-two.
Two million forty-two thousand, two zero four two zero zero.
I was looking for more digits in the zero zero zero. That's all. Thank you.
So the the reasoning for this is, this again is a significant, significant increase. I'm not saying it isn't valuable and there isn't a good reason to do this. I think there's still some uncertainty about what our mill rate is, whether we get the mill rate limit. We can re, we can look at this again in the first quarter budget revision. And it may well be, we'll have better sense of what the situation is with FEMA grants, et cetera. And we may well want to revisit this and adjust it back up when we make a final decision. But I would rather say yes to half of it now and then maybe yes to the other half of it later rather than rather than do it all today because we're not really practically going to be able to go backwards. And I think this, this is such an increase relative to everything else that it significantly reduces our margin for any adjustments in other, in the other areas, other service areas, possibly.
Is it possible to just get what the contract amount will be?
So the, what will happen is we're going to reduce, of that two million forty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-five thousand will be taken out as IGCs. And then that would be the contract amount that. And so just to confirm with the board, the only thing that really is not part of the contract amount is the vehicle maintenance, which was reduced this year, the twenty thousand, the contribution to capital. We'll, we'll probably keep those numbers the same if that's the will of the board. And then the remaining amount, Chief Weston will have to figure out how she divides within the contract.
But could I get what the contract amount is?
So, okay, so let's just do this. So we're, the proposed amount right now is two million twenty-two thousand. And then we're going to subtract the IGC of four seventy-five, five three two. And then we're going to subtract the twenty thousand, which is not part of, for vehicle management, was not part of the contract for the fire department, minus the seventy-four thousand for capital contribution, minus the hundred and four, five forty. That would have a total of one million three hundred and seventy-six dollars and nine hundred and, one million three hundred and seventy-six, nine twenty-eight.
It's ninety, it's eighty, so that doesn't seem quite right. It's eighty-seven thousand dollars less than the one four seven five. So that would be one four nine two, I think. One three.
One three, seven, six, nine, two, eight. Does that sound right?
You said minus eighty-five thousand?
Minus eighty, minus eighty-seven thousand, so eighty, eighty-six, nine oh five actually in total, but basically eighty-seven thousand less.
So one million three hundred and eighty-eight thousand.
Yeah.
Eight three three? To get. Which should still be over a hundred thousand dollar increase this year.
So, yep, minus the eight ninety-eight. So any more discussion on the amendment?
I'll just chime in. I appreciate the amendment and all the work that has been done in the last several days on this part of the budget. And knowing that Chief Weston was open to other options, even though they are time consuming, there were other options. And then first quarter revisions would be a great time to see more of the details of numbers with the mill rate and everything. So I think that gives us, it gives us room. So thank you.
To chime in with thanks on this. I know this is a huge chore for you.
I gotta, yeah, now I gotta recalculate some stuff. So, okay, that's okay.
See how it's spoken. I don't know which way it's gonna go. Okay, any more discussion? If not, let's go to a roll call vote on the amendment.
Sure. Brian Burnett?
No.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Kelly Aknek?
Yes.
Brian, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Motion passes four one.
Can I get that number again? Sorry.
Which number?
The final number.
The final contract amount seemed to be one million three hundred and eighty-eight, eight thirty-three.
We can confirm that. I think it's like a hundred dollars more than that, but that's why I made it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I can work that out with anyone.
No, that's fine. I just, yeah, I gotta do some math. Thank you.
Okay, so that's the amendment passed. So now the, now the motion is to approve the fire department budget of two oh four two thousand, two million forty-two thousand. So that's what's in front of us. And then we should vote on the, on the motion itself. Roll call, please.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Kelly Aknek?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you. So the second, the second motion would be on the housing and equal budget, making the proposed areas of budgets of two thousand dollars. Thank you. Have a second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
We had a, a, a comment earlier about potentially reducing this, this forty thousand to twenty thousand this year.
You want to make that as a, the amendment?
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that I do because I, I want to, I want to be able to take advantage of, I'm concerned about not being able to take advantage of opportunities for moving forward on the, on Ruane Road and and RV Park.
Yep.
I agree with that.
Okay, any, any further discussion on this? If not, we will move to roll call vote.
Okay, Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Kelly Aknek?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move to the roads budget. The number here is one thou, sorry, one million one hundred sixty-six thousand and seven dollars. Anyone like to move?
I moved.
Thank you. Give us a second.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion?
I guess I had a follow up from earlier on the general liability. And I, I think the answer would probably be just first quarter revisions. If there was some mistake or something weird in there, Kyle would, would we just change it in first quarter revisions?
So those are controlled by the O M B office, but I think maybe the discussion on that was to have a talk with the city manager to find out why that general liability went up so much. So we can add that to that quarterly meeting in October.
Great. Okay, thank you.
I have a question too about, the question about facilities fees. Am I understanding that that wouldn't really be discussed now, but it was something that, like, I kind of want to understand that, like, as I vote for this number, that it's understood that we'll discuss this further in the falls.
Sure. Correct. I, I think it should be discussed with the city manager just to get a better grasp on these IGCs. Because I just put them in here to give us an understanding for mill rate calculation, but we have no control over what those are.
Your question was.
My question.
Fees of the room and stuff.
Oh, for the fees of the room. Oh, yeah.
Agreement that we'll put that on a, an agenda this fall.
We could probably, we could probably put that as new business to start right away in September.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's up to coaches. Yes.
Excuse me. I just wanted to have it understood as an implicit part of the vote I'm making now is that I would like to, to make sure that we are at least considering not decreasing some of the services we have, but maybe increasing. I view it as a way of investing in the current, our, our current facilities, it's not decreasing our maintenance.
Yeah, I understand.
I think that's even doubly so because I think what we've heard is an increasing proportion, probably the majority of the, of the fees that are being paid by groups outside of this community. So I think that's a completely fair situation. Any further discussion? Well, then we will move to a roll call vote, please.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Kelly Aknek?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, and ultimately, consider a motion to approve the budget for Parks and Rec for six hundred and forty-four thousand nineteen dollars.
Action.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Before Jennifer said it, I'd say the same thing. I think this is, again, the same caveat of, hey, I expect us to have a, we will have a discussion about fees and then we'll roll that into our final numbers in first quarter budget revision. So fees in the next month or two.
Okay.
Okay, let's move to a roll call.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Kelly Aknek?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Motion's five zero.
Thank you. Finally, police. I think the police is a budget of nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars.
I'm low.
Second.
Okay, move to second. Any further discussion? Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna propose an amendment here. I find it troublesome, a little frustrating, that this overtime for special events of ten thousand dollars that appear. I mean, this is a, this has been a known quantity since the very beginning. Definitely when the second contract, which we're currently on year five of, was negotiated. Given the other increases and everything else, I just find that an unnecessary nickel and dime. I don't have any problem with the dispatch. Dispatch is clearly a significantly improved and new service, which is outside the original scope. I think that's absolutely fine. The fact that we pay a good majority of it is absolutely fine because we use the majority of the dispatch. I find that ten thousand just sort of unacceptable. So I would propose a reduction of ten thousand to nine hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and twelve.
Second.
Thank you, Brianna. Further discussions?
Yeah.
Go please.
I'll just question for you because my understanding, we talked about this previously, was that we have a legit risk that the Woodyer City Council just takes away and pulls the rug out of the whole thing. Unless we, so I guess we just need to understand that we don't have another option if they do that. And I guess the potential recourse would be that we say, okay, fine, we'll pay you the ten thousand, but have we burned that bridge? I don't know. But as I understand it, that's the risk.
That's the risk. There's a risk to it. There, you know, you could be calling their bluff and they could be okay with it. They, you know, it's hard to say what their, you know, I know there's, there's favorable people that they understand. you know, I know there's, there's favorable people that they understand that they're getting a better police service because of the shared services, you know, more officers. Things like that. But there's other half of the board or council who feels that uh they've lost their police department to Gerwood. And so um, so they, I guess, have insisted on this ten thousand dollar increase being put in there to cover it. Um, so, um, but you could, we could go for it and see what happens. And um, you know, it might lead to some rounds of uh trying to resolve uh the disagreement, but it, it's, it's part of negotiating um, uh, on our aspect of them asking for increase. We're already paying thirty-two thousand dollars more this year uh, for dispatch services. So uh, we have no heartburn with that, but I think trying to slide in ten thousand dollars is also a little bit I mean, when I got it, I felt, didn't feel good about it. So.
Yeah, I mean, we're paying, we're paying ninety-something thousand extra this year with the uh, with the mandatory increase in the, in the contract rate as well. Um, again, I think this is uh, this is not actually the discussion of the contract, because we have to go through the contract amendment process and have a resolution to support the contract amendment if the amount is budgeting against it. So this is a statement of intent, not necessarily a statement of final decision.
Yeah.
Brianna?
Is there a way to ask after the fact how many hours were actually overtime?
Uh, sure, we could have chief put together a report on that. Um, I know that uh I know at least three officers were, because the way they work is officers are on for a week on, week off. And I know three officers were brought in for uh three and a half extra days, uh, which would be their typical days off to cover full shifts um, during those periods. So, so, but he could probably give us a better report.
Thank you for just not even, I, it's just curious, because it is kind of a even chunk of number. I don't know.
I think you had a question just.
Yeah, I didn't hear the amount that you said instead of the ten, which I think that your motion was instead of the ten.
Instead of ten, zero for that column. So it would be reducing ten thousand overall to nine, one, three, um, six, two, two.
And may I ask the significance of that number?
Uh, it's that overtime for special events, we would be zeroing out that element.
He's just taking ten thousand off.
So we're paying the additional contract cost about um, what's that, sixty-four thousand, sixty-three thousand? And then we would be paying the additional thirty-two and thirty-two, seven fifty.
So we're taking it up.
Dispatch, but not the ten thousand for addition. I mean, the other point I would make is those three events, two of them are a pri- private company. Um, and I'm sure they make plenty out of those events. And the other one is for a nonprofit, we don't charge anything for uh, for the use of our facilities. So, you know, it's all a subsidy to um, you know, a nonprofit, but primarily to uh, to a private company.
So, cause you're saying Slush Cup and?
Slush Cup, New Year's, and Forest Fair are the three that we're quoting.
And and with that, we, we could approach uh, having those organizations pay additional. Um, my request to the police department is to have additional coverage, because we know we needed it.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, that was kind of my question. I mean, the contract provides for a certain amount of coverage of police. And so we're explicitly asking the police to amplify their coverage and provide more services than contracted for these events.
Correct.
And so they're basically saying, yes, we'll provide more services than the contract states. But you need to pay for them, which actually feels pretty fair, because we're actually asking for delivery over that which is contracted. But I do think that the point that you're raising here, that the service area pay when it's Elyeska and Forest Fair, that is um the source of the need, you know, do you pass that on to Forest Fair? Um, and just reduce the amount that's raised for nonprofits? Do you pass that on? Do, or do you attempt to pass that on to the resort to say it's their obligation for public safety because of, you know, that's you know, so it gets pretty, pretty gray. But I think purely speaking, we can certainly challenge it, but if they've contracted to provide a service and we're asking for more than this, the contract provides, it is not inappropriate that, that they would charge for it.
A recollection contract is that it's uh, there's a provision of a minimum amount um, of the two effectively the two drug rounds uh per day. And then there is a statement in there that there would be appropriate staffing for, you know, some defined special events in the contract itself. So it is referenced, they just didn't have dollar amounts associated with it. They're identified from the beginning as um, times where there would need to be extra policing. Uh, so that's for the last ten years. But then again, there's an additional ten years for additional ten thousand dollars for year eleven and twelve, not for the first ten.
Oh, yeah, the way you're placed for ten years?
Since twenty sixteen.
Goodness.
Does that?
My goodness, I want to refund. Um, that is sick. Uh, yeah, okay, that point is well made. Um, because the contract has been the same and the service has been the same. And now all of a sudden there's an increase in the fee.
In addition to the mandatory. Brianna?
Thank you. I would just try to add that potential outcome of this possible amendment would be they could come back with an exact dollar amount of overtime that is outside of what's in the contract before and other years. Or asking for alcohol tax reimbursement for special events for those hours. And that is what we, our fire department has done and Whittier I thought did. Doesn't mean we got it, but we can ask.
Thanks, Kurt.
Yes.
Some verification is, I think I asked this question earlier, if I'm not mistaken. You said there was something about um, they, they hadn't really done, they hadn't expected the increase in crowds for a weekend when forest are hit on a weekend. Was, was that part of this? That there was, there was some aspect of this that was unexpected, I guess.
When the Fort July falls on the weekend, it falls on their Fort July event. So they're splitting officers between both areas. So they do bring in even more officers in those periods to cover that.
And so were they not, are they essentially saying that they didn't anticipate that with the initial negotiation of the contract?
I think that was part of it. And um, and I think another part of this that he explained to me is that they're trying to bring on another officer. Um, had to add another one to the fleet. And so part of this would help cover and, and we wrote in here overtime for special events, but he did also have for equipment as well, uh, would help fund maybe a new cruiser to have that additional officer. And they're trying to add another officer to the fleet, or to the, to the personnel in that aspect. And so he's trying to work that through. So I think he was hoping that this ten thousand dollars may help that with that pause at the Whittier Council.
Sorry, trying to wrap my head around that. You're saying they're trying to add another officer and that this is part of the funding, that like where he's piecing together funding to make that officer.
So he's showing that he's gaining the overtime hours for special events, which he can hopefully justify to bring in another officer at full time.
And I have a question for the um initiator of the amendment.
Yeah.
Are, are, do you feel permitted to just take in the full ten thousand off?
But that's what I'm suggesting for now. But again, this is not, we are not voting on whether to approve the contract. That is a separate vote.
Sure.
We're voting on whether, on what we should budget for uh, for the, for the contract next year. We have another opportunity to, to change that. Uh, when it comes to first quarter budget.
So you're basically forcing a creative conversation in the contract approval conversation. And if that creative conversation ends up with them not budging on this ten thousand, then we would need to change that in the first quarter revisions to budget for the additional ten thousand.
You could definitely say that.
I mean, I'm just trying to piece through like the unfolding from here, because this is less my familiar zone. I mean, but that's essentially what we're signing up for is, is, is if we don't approve the full budget, that drives you to have a difficult conversation where you negotiate that we don't pay that. And if they put a hard line on it, then if we want a contract, we have to approve that money. And if they budge on it, then we don't.
Correct. So, so if they, if they say, okay, we'll go without the ten thousand, then we're set. But if they come back and say, no, ten thousand, or no, no police services, then we'll probably have to have a first quarter revision to make that, that money up.
But we need to, we need to approve at some point between now and the end of the year, we need to approve a contract amendment. Or we need to make a resolution to ask the Assembly to approve a contract amendment.
Correct.
As the, while the eighty-five, uh, the eight, five, six, or eighty-seven, et cetera, is in the contract, the thirty-two, seven fifty isn't. So we have to do, we have to basically provide a resolution for contract.
Correct, which we're hoping you can use at the next meeting.
Right. That's the vote, that's the vote that we actually, when we say.
That means you have to have that creative conversation before we have that go to the Assembly, because we need to ask explicitly for so that, this all has to get resolved in the next week.
Correct. So if we make this decision tonight, whatever we make tonight, then I'll be working with the chief tomorrow to start that conversation.
What does this do with the Public Safety Advisory Committee recommendation?
Fire, we won't be following exactly their recommendation, we'll be following parts, but, but again, it's a, it's advice to us. We should weigh that as part of the decision. I don't know how deeply they considered all the options. Um, unfortunately, I wasn't able to make that.
Do you remember exactly the, the verbiage of the recommendation? Because I thought the recommendation was to approve the contract revisions, but I mean, which fundamentally, I, I don't know.
I'm just wondering if this needs to involve people that you've asked to serve on that committee?
Their, their operating procedures don't require you to go back and like land use does, so you, you wouldn't have to go back. But um but yeah, I think their context is that they were fine with the expenses, but they were more, I think they were more, they wanted to keep the service going, because they, they uh they are pleased with the service that Whittier's providing.
Right. Well, and they're also there hearing when people come and ask for, you know, more drive-throughs on Timberline or, you know, additional service. So I feel like they're the ones who potentially have the relationship. Some of them may have a relationship.
You're the power of the purse.
Right.
I hear plenty of that as well.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Kim.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say, contractually, and again, we don't have it in front of us, but do they have the, I guess we gotta look at we, we need to see what's actually written with regard to special events, because the other thing that they could credibly do is say, okay, fine, then we're not gonna cover extra people for your special events. Which is actually a bigger problem with the ten thousand dollars, because I believe we do need extra coverage during Forest Fair and Slush Cup and things like that. Um, so do you know the contract deeply enough to know that if we didn't fund this, could they say then we won't cover your special events with extra people?
Uh, they, they could. And that becomes a risk factor for them um, by not having additional officers available for backup for the other officers. They still have a primary responsibility to respond to every service call. And uh, if they understaff themselves, they're putting themselves in a risk position by doing that, because uh, they're dealing with large crowds. So um, in the contract, we definitely want them to recognize that there are three large events that they need to be prepared for. As to how they manage those, that's always been within their wheelhouse. And through my years of discussion and the feedback I got from the community, chief of Shea and the previous chiefs have responded to say, yes, we can get you more officers there, so that there's better coverage. Um, because we've had certain years where we just had one officer on patrol here in the valley and the guys were running all over the place. And then when he needs backup, sometimes it was coming from Whittier in the early years. And so um, so we've gotten to a point now where there's during large events, there's at least two officers together in the valley at all times.
So they're basically doing that to manage their workload, because their obligation is to respond to every call and it's running a guy racking.
Correct. And also to support their officers.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
So to have a good safety protocol as to how they respond to large events.
Yeah.
So just to add one nuance, this, as this was originally presented, and I believe it was presented to um, a P S A as well. Uh, this was originally overtime is part of this, a big part of this is extra equipment. Um, you know, part of it, your cruiser, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not all clear that it was ten thousand dollars for overtime. It was probably something like one or two overtime, and the rest for, for equipment and capital. We didn't get a very clear breakdown. It was, for this uh it was for both overtime and uh, and uh, equipment.
Mm-hmm.
But it sounds like this was their assembly just being.
Sorry, yeah. Um, I know you had your hand up. Do you have a?
I do have my hand up. Not quite sure how to answer to ask this question, because it's, I'm just gonna ask it. Is there um is there any opportunity to contract with the Anchorage Police Department for special events to get a one or two officers out for a uh, something like a New Year's Eve or a Slush Cup?
Yes, there is.
So this, this ten thousand dollars would not necessarily be, we could approve it and not necessarily have it dedicated to Whittier Police Department.
Yeah, I think it would cost you way more than ten thousand dollars to get an extra house for each one of those events.
That's kind of what I thought, but I wanted that.
I think they tried to pass it.
Yes.
True.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, let's say three. Yeah. And like, when those extra officers come on, they're usually working ten to twelve hour shifts.
Okay.
Okay, I think the conversation is growing to a halt. So uh, unless there's any more comments on this, let's, let's uh vote on the amendment. The amendment be true. Reduce it to nine, one, three, six, one, two.
Uh, Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Uh, Kelly Aknek? Uh, Bri- Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Uh, Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Uh, amendment passes.
Okay, so now uh, we're back on the main amendment. Um, I don't know if there's any more discussion needed on that.
Um.
No? So um, so now we have the uh, the main motion to approve um, nine hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and twelve for police.
Uh, Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Kelly Aknek? Jennifer, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Um, I think that's all the action we need to provide tonight uh, on the budget. We still have three more items. Um, is there anything else your staff needs?
Nope.
Project site?
That is it.
Thank you so much for all the work done on this. I'm sorry to throw in a few curveballs again, but uh
No problem.
Just math, just math. The reason we have it in spreadsheets, you can make changes.
All right.
Um, so the, the next item is um M O A wide uh, S T R tax proposal, uh, considered resolution of support. I think this was actually meant to be a a new business, so we could discuss it at our regular meeting. Um, I know we have it in, just have it under generalities. So um, I'd wanna make it sure everyone's aware for this proposal. This is not short-term rental uh, regulation. This is a straight request to, to basically put on the ballot for next year, a five percent um tax in addition to room tax on short-term rentals. Um to editorialize slightly, one of the, the twelve percent that's currently taxed, the twelve percent room tax that's currently um charged to hotel and motel, to bed, traditional bed and breakfast and short-term rentals. Um, has many, many, many components, lots of historical um baggage, data changes, um, bond issuances, which have a bunch of legal documents associated with it. It's a tangled mess. So trying to get money out of that is difficult, to say the least. Um, it's unclear how much flexibility there is, and any interpretation from the municipality can always be challenged. This would be a straight five percent, and it's five percent if the votes approve it. Um, which would be directed to um, supportive, helping housing development and infrastructure. Um, there's no specificity about exact et cetera. And we probably want language in any resolution we write around that. But this is kind of an end run around all of this, tied up with terms. So that's what it actually is. Um, I believe this is being, this will be um a public hearing on the twenty-third of September. The intent is to have a resolution, draft resolution ready for our regular meeting.
Question on this?
Absolutely.
Do we have any indication that we would be able to track the collection of this tax, or more precisely the area in which this tax is collected in? In particular, is there any way that we could increase in the sense of getting a proportion of this tax to the global raises?
Well, that would be, that would be what I would then strongly argue for. Um, the there should be. I mean, first of all, there's a separate process of, there's a separate um ordinance, which we're gonna shortly introduce. Um, or like for regulation or registration, which we'll give. Uh, or like for regulation or registration, which we'll give, should have a mechanism for tracking. Um, independently, um, if there is language in here, which talks about. Geographic aspects, then that gives a justification for the platforms providing the information that was being requested. Um, I think the, the preview, the prior uh, or the administration slightly overstepped what the um. What the prior ordinance actually requested, and started asking for individual addresses. Which is not what the ordinance actually was requesting, and the platform said no to that, reasonably. Um, the, the ordinance that the assembly passed was actually about geographic areas. Uh, zip code-like equivalents and, and general numbers, not details. Um, so as long as something similar was clearly in the language, at the implementation language, then the platform should follow. Um, so as long as there's something about geographic distribution in the implementation language, it does not have to be in the, uh, in the ballot proposition. So, yes, but I, I would, I would say that's a requirement, yes.
Well, I can say one more thing about that, I'm gonna personally have a hard time supporting a result of seventeen percent tax, which is pretty extraordinary, even if. Still is everywhere except for. But uh, that I've traveled to, seventeen percent is fairly steep. Uh, and I think the only, the only thing that would make me reconsider that would be a guarantee. Of some of that portion coming to Girdwood, but otherwise, I just.
I'd go further, not a guarantee of some of it, a guarantee of all of it. The twelve percent goes to Anchorage, and it's really, from my perspective, one of the most grating things. About being Girdwood and having this hotel, and we get zero dollars from the bed taxes in this valley, which is. Insane, especially considering the impact of Airbnb on our community. So from my perspective, I would only support this if a hundred percent of the increase. Because it's specific to short-term rentals, and the problems in our valley are specific to the impacts of short-term rentals. Anchorage, no, Anchorage on getting more, they've got their twelve percent, and that, which I agree with you is. Norway notwithstanding astronomical by anywhere else in the country, so, so they don't seventeen percent, but. If it did come back to the valley, and because we threw out this problem, and if it could fund G H C and Ruain and things of this nature. That directly get at the issue, then, okay, maybe, just building on what you're saying.
Yeah. I think our, our challenge on, on getting any money that, out of this is also. We technically only have two votes of thirteen sitting on the, um, on the assembly also.
If then.
If that, yeah, and so the chances of seeing any, any. Larger slice of, of that, of that money is pretty minimal.
But that said, we've made such a statement and such a case for the housing problem, and we have now G H C. We have a mechanism by which, so I wouldn't be so sure that we've only got two, because, you know. We, there are people who, who understand that we are uniquely suffering, and. And have a unique element, and if this money is supposed to go to solve the problem, we actually have a vehicle, which we voted on. To solve the problem, so I would suggest we have a reasonable platform. From which to advocate and be heard, but I also suffer from a condition called chronic, and I have optimism, and a very point for optimism, especially when the assembly is. While it's reasonable, I don't know if it's credible.
I wouldn't say we only have two representatives, let's say there are ten representatives who only represent in their districts. Um, short-term rental owners, the hosts, and nobody who lives in Girdwood. So that's the, that's the fight, that does not mean that they only represent those narrow interests. But that's their voting constituency, and probably their, um, their funders as well. Um, but I think many assembly members think, think about things more holistically, and some do not.
Um, just a brief question, it's eight fifty six. Um, will NATO do an extension, and can we have a three-minute bathroom break?
I think that's a great idea, so let's, let's re, let's first just say. I don't know if we actually have to extend anything, because I think we say ten o'clock is when we have to extend it, so let's take a, let's take a five minute recess.
For those online who didn't hear that, we're taking a five-minute recess.
Well, there's no, there's no action today.
Yeah, so.
Actually, yeah.
You guys can move the other meeting and then the third other thing, oh, the posting, you can, you can have.
We, we can take, we can take five minutes.
Our element of it comes directly to Girdwood, otherwise we don't, because we need to do our own thing.
And the element should be, should be based on, on the amount of money being raised, not just the population percentage.
No, 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 the actual dollars, because we have a higher rental rate than. The Anchorage, yeah, no, the dollars, the five percent generated from properties listed in Girdwood zip code. Be returned directly to the service area for use in our G H C.
Yes.
Great.
That, what's really useful is this, this gives some language.
Yeah.
Um.
I think it was locked down that discussion before the thing gets rid.
Yeah.
Exactly, which is the purpose of this discussion, uh, I would like to um, draft the resolution, and I'd be very happy to work with somebody else. Uh, if anyone else wants to help.
I can, if you want, nobody else, no one to do.
I was voting for you with my eyes. I was giving you, I was giving you the, there, Wingard, it's you.
You can skip at any time.
No, 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 I, I was not very communicating that you should volunteer, because I vote for you.
Okay, so that was, that's gonna come back to, we should have a resolution, um, a draft resolution available in the packet two weeks. Um. So, okay, uh, item number two is finished, reschedule one profit work session.
So there's a conflict with that uh, C Y investment, um, they're gonna be presenting their, basically their um, development plan. Or the phase one of uh, the residential over there, which will probably be also a plat, um, the first view of what the plat looks like. Uh, so it's happening the same night as the, and so we don't really wanna co- play a conflict where people can't attend that, because this seems like more of a priority, so. Uh, we need to find a new date, um, as of right now, that meeting is standing, I know there's gonna be some question about if it has been uh, followed by code. Um, but at this point in time, we should prepare for the fact that the meeting has been sent out, the flyers have been published. Um, and the community is looking at going to that meeting.
Where's the location of that?
It's at the Our Lady of the Snows um, community room, up there, the resort.
Brianna?
Thank you, I remember pulling for the, the grant presentation meeting, and it was really hard to find the time. Uh, and the, the event at the Our Lady of the Snow starts at five o'clock. But I understand the conflict for thirty minutes.
Right, it's five to seven thirty, um, and then there's also the assembly meeting that night as well, so.
Right, the assembly.
Things like the right, so the other thing about this. That you have with the grantees is there isn't really urgency in holding that before. Any particular date, you just can't vote on the amounts that you're going to allocate to the grantees until you've had that meeting. So, you know, it might mean that we push that decision off um, until October. And, I mean, there's, there's a lot of competition for a lot of different kinds of public meetings coming up here in the end of September. So there's just a lot of things for people to be watching and being mindful of. Um, that being said, it did go out in all of the documents that went with the grant paperwork. Um, and I know that some of the local organizations have, say, staffing changes and other things, so there could be some. People who are put out by the change, I don't really know, we haven't explored that.
And I don't know the structure of the C Y investment meeting, if it's just gonna be come in, find out information, leave, or if they're gonna do an actual presentation. Um, at some point, so, um, they haven't given us idea about that, I can ask for that clarification, but. The really only reason would be to, the grant meeting is just to free it up, so there's no conflict, and allows for. G B O S and other community members to free them there.
Although there's, it's two conflicts, not three, really.
If you're attending the assembly meeting as well, that night.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Um, I support moving it, and I agree with everything being said, although I do think it's appropriate to send a kind. Lovely supportive letter to our friend Connie Yoshimura, suggesting that she. Might wanna review our community calendar and respect Girdwood's, you know, standing, you know what I mean, like, there's something about like. Hey, why don't you bulldoze our community in another way while you're at it, you know, that. I, I, you know, this is early in the project, and, you know, we train people how to relate to us. It would, I think we may do well to train Connie to at least check if there's an event that night that might be. Conflicting with what she wants to do.
Well, to be fair, I think they did check with this, but they were checking for meeting space, and they heard that the space was full. And so they booked it someplace else.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, I, I think.
They, they.
I understand what you're saying, I'm not sure how publicly available the information was on what sort of a meeting was going on that night. I think there was, you know, asking questions, but not necessarily me understanding that the question might have a fuller answer.
They uh, they didn't do a very good job, because they didn't know that the assembly had a meeting that night, H L B pointed it out to them, or maybe they did. They, they, there could be a strategy to this and what's going on, but I, I don't know, but uh, H L B pointed out to them like, hey, there's an assembly meeting that night, so. Assembly members can't attend this meeting either, because it's going on, and so, but um, that didn't seem to change what was going with their.
Which actually further emphasizes it's worth writing a note saying that we request that you not plan these meetings when they conflict with. Events that prevent elected representatives from participating in this matter of serious interest to the community. I mean, that's two events that mean everybody elected to support the people of Girdwood can't participate. And so I think it is worth pointing that out explicitly, and making a actual request that future events. Avoid conflict with elected representatives doing their primary duties.
You know, most of these C U Ps come in through a G B O S presentation. So we see them in other, you know, Arco does it, he comes in and does them here in the room, you know, and so. The, the most ideal thing that a petitioner should do is just come to a, a community council meeting, which is G B O S for the Girdwood Valley Service.
I, I would go one step further, it's not just the easier thing to do, it's what's required in code.
Yeah, well, then maybe that's.
Code actually, could, could you, um, could you pull up the unique code?
I didn't mean.
No, that's fine. Uh, there's a section of code, which I wanna just point out now, since it's. Um, it's uh, it's twenty-one oh three oh two oh, section C. After twenty-three? Uh, yeah, twenty-one, it's a twenty-one, section three. And then thirty. Twenty-one oh three.
Planning and zoning.
Yeah, a bit further there, but the, oh, three.
Oh, three?
Twenty-one, oh, three, oh, three.
Okay.
There we go, top there.
Twenty-one, oh, three, three?
Yeah, that's, that's true, it's a permit, section C. Uh, sorry, oh, three, oh, two, oh, sorry. Three, three, oh, yeah, it's up there in section C. Up a bit. There we go, uh, yeah, if you go to two B, so this is the um. So this is the community meeting, the applicant shall use his first community council meeting project area as the community meeting. When the community council meeting is available, so we have two of these meetings every single month, and uh, the. The applicant knows that, and uh, definitely I've asked. I've asked when this is gonna be scheduled, and mentioned that the, you know, the expectation is gonna be at an F U C or a G B O S meeting. And even said, you know, potentially it could be even a special meeting. Um, but it seems like from the very beginning, they had the intent of not doing it at a community council meeting. So they have an obligation to explain why that is to the director, and for that to be shared with us, and we haven't seen anything. Uh, so that's the question that's currently gone to planning. About, uh, you know, why isn't this, why is, basically why, what was their explanation, why?
So you have asked that.
We have asked that question of planning.
Okay.
Of the current planning manager, um, and the director, although the director is on leave for another two weeks. That's come, I wrote it, and Jennifer has a C C done. So that, that, I don't think this is gonna result in it being changed, because I think generally there's a lot of latitude given to the applicants, but this is.
That's very implicit, though.
This is very minimum, the uh, not showing any good, any uh, any uh. Any either sensitivity or even just uh, any good grace in terms of the process, it's just another.
Which further amplifies, I think, the reason, the, you know, letter of, you're not following code. You're doing it at a time when elected representatives can't go, and, you know. They already don't like you, we're not supposed to say that.
I just, Mike, I would really appreciate you for finding this.
Yeah.
In the code that I, um, and also for following up on that, and I think it was a good move to involve the city in this, I think, to make sure that our current administration is aware of the kinds of issues, because as speaking of others, it's not exactly out of character. And so, and it doesn't appear to be in good faith.
I think it's, given the, given that we've, uh, we're having this discussion in public, I think it's fine. Could you just forward the um actually, I did not, I don't think I did copy it, sorry, I apologize, I will do so, and then if you could forward it to all people, right? At the record.
Was Zach Donaldson C C on it too? Because actually, he seems to be cued into what's really going on, and I think it was appropriate to set him up to advocate for Girdwood, I'd actually C C all the assembly, whoever else, you know.
Would you like to forward it to Kyle right now?
Yeah, yeah, if you, that's easy for you to do in the meantime. Okay.
Yeah, I would just point out, yeah, they're, they are not doing a very good job of, of communicating with the community, and also, I, I wanna point out that they also are kind of um choosing who they're communicating with also, as I, I received direct contact this week from a representative to meet with them.
Florida, basically, I suppose.
Uh, California, I think.
California phone number, but Florida address.
Yeah, yeah. You know, so to, to open some lines of communication or something.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's the prime, the primary point. Contact, but we can do. Um, yeah, so just wanted to make sure everyone's aware of what's going on here. This probably won't, this request probably won't result in a change in that meeting date, but uh, it's just again, another, another piece, another piece of evidence.
So, does this mean that um, that once they, that um, the question to be asked to, to C Y investments is, is that if, once they hold this public meeting that they are not intending to come back to the community in any future meetings?
So, uh, they are not required to come back, but we, you're gonna see come from planning department is this P, which will be able to go through a lanyard and, and, you know, and and what I think we've gotten used to over the years is usually like, a guy like Marco shows up and looking for resolution of support to strengthen their packet.
Yeah.
And most likely, we probably won't see them.
Probably not.
Here to ask, request that.
Yeah. Gosh.
Maybe they can also ask for you.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Well, we can make whatever resolution we want, and if we don't support it, we can make that resolution too.
Yeah. Yeah.
Which is perhaps not an inappropriate resolution to make, on the good, lack of good faith for, you know, all.
If we, if we narrow it back down to this very specific question about whether we reschedule um the nonprofit thing, I think there's a, like, I think the, the the right thing to do, that probably the practical thing to do is to, uh, is to push it back into October.
I move to reschedule the meeting at whatever date the do book suggests is the best.
Okay, so I think probably that will mean that an item that's on the agenda for September will probably postpone to October, which will be fine. Um, and um, just to give you guys an idea of what the poll will probably show, it will probably be sometime between September twenty ninth and October fifteenth.
Thank you. Um, I don't think it's any further action on that tonight. Um, item number four is G H C's, G H E C vacancy. So this is also new item of business.
Correct.
So just for information.
And we'll, uh, we had a, uh, Red Web Bank's resigned, so we have an open seat, and you just appointed one member, um, but we had two applicants for it, so I think maybe we'll reach out to see if the, if the other applicant's still interested, and then bring that to your meeting. If not, we'll have to fly, we'll post notice, uh, may have to post notice anyways.
I think we're required to post notice anyway.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll let the applicant know he can refile again if he likes.
Sure.
Yeah, so the purpose of getting this on tonight is so that we can go ahead and post that, and then hopefully have some candidates available for you to consider, although I don't know if we'll have enough. Maybe there'll be enough time, I think, guess your meeting isn't until
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, yeah, that's kinda early in the month, anyway.
Did Brad give any reason for resignation or?
Uh, we can forward the email to the committee, to the board, if everybody understands.
Okay, um, I see if there's nothing else on that item, then, oh, sorry, yes.
Sorry, I was just gonna ask.
Public comment.
Oh, public comment.
Not seeing any members of the public here, someone wants to act in that capacity. Um, move to Jen.
Move to Jen.
Thank you.
Second.
Bye, your honor.
Thanks, Brianna.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, good night.